Like how everybody gets real quiet.
Well, Google Maps could be good. Better. Kind of a good idea where.
Dear, you better present for Eric.
Yes.
Yeah, Google's still showing a road through there.
Oh, really? Yeah. Huh, I'll be darned.
No, you don't have to do that.
They're still showing it as a road through there.
We're gonna advertise it.
Never been a road since I've been alive.
Well, it was when I.
Well, when you were a little. A little bit.
Just a little. What's that?
I, I has what Phil sent me.
It should have been in.
So then, but definitely, I mean.
That could Aurora stances, they could reopen that road.
I think it's the certification. It was the certification that Nicole had sent.
Yeah, I think there's. But what benefit is that?
Reason for benefit, I mean, it's like.
We'd have to talk to.
As they did.
Aurora. Find out.
Yeah.
What are you thinking?
Just the actual edit.
What would they, what would benefit?
Yeah, that's my, just the actual edits. Just the actual edits, not the letter.
I had Todd call.
Oh, I can tell this or page from us now.
They want to put in like.
It, is this mine?
Like a wreck area.
Yeah.
With the higher rated and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
No, Pat.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
They just bought a bunch of barges.
Oh, did they, oh?
Yeah, and they're gonna put them under the bridge or something to connect the trails. I didn't hear it.
Wow.
I don't know. He bought them at a bankruptcy sale.
Sounds possible, I just wanna go.
Well, I'm gonna turn and say.
Oh, yeah.
You guys, you guys ready?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the, uh, Girbert County Board of Commissioners meeting, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shouldn't know it, but. As there is, as there is the meaning of federal puns and in support of Girbert County's efforts to ensure nondiscrimination and equal access to all citizens, the county gathers statistical data regarding participants in county activities. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI political involvement survey at this meeting. You are not required to complete this survey. However, the form is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and ADA.
Thanks, Andrew. Uh, old business, the property on West Side Drive in Aurora.
Uh, yes, so, uh, last meeting, it was discussed, there's an, an owner of property next to this parcel that is interested in purchasing the property. Um, if it were to go to sale, we wouldn't be able to deal with them. That individual arm's length, there's a bidding process, the property would have to be appraised, and then there's a bidding process that would have to be adhered to. Also, um, Todd Listerman spoke with Mayor Schwing, and Mayor Schwing did indicate that the city of Aurora would be interested in that property being transferred to their redevelopment commission. I think he talked about maybe cleaning it up and doing a kayak or canoe launch on that parcel. Um, I think you can access it from West Side Drive. So, the process to transfer to a political subdivision, another, you know, political subdivision is substantially easier. It requires the adoption of substantially identical resolutions by both the county and the city of Aurora, and then we can just transfer it after those resolutions have been, um, approved. So, there are, or to essentially, you have three options. One is to have the property appraised and put the property up to, up for sale to anyone.
Yes.
It would be for sale to anyone. It could be the city of Aurora, it could be this person that lives next door, it could be somebody. What's that?
Sanitary sewer.
We had, we checked on that. I think that sanitary sewer line goes through on the state's property three fifty, because this parcel is like basically the bank and then the creek. So it could be sold to this person or the city of Aurora or to whoever. Um, or the other, another option is that the county can say, okay, we're agreeable to transfer it to Aurora's redevelopment commission so that they can do some type of, I don't know, kayak launch or whatever that they've discussed doing, or you could just keep it.
Okay, does anybody, uh, in favor of any of the options presented by Mr. Biden, does he?
Well, my questions for the city of Aurora would be, how fast are they planning on doing so? That would be the thing. If we transfer this and it sits for another thirty years.
Could, well.
Is there an immediate plan to wanna do something or is, uh, you know?
I, I doubt it. I doubt it. Uh, because they, they would have approached us by now, I think, if they were really hot to do something like that.
Correct.
Uh, I'm, I'm of the opinion of the options that he presented, if we have more than one person interested in purchasing the property is that we have it, uh, uh, appraised or what have you, and then put it out for whoever wants to buy in at the highest price.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to keep it, and. Well, I don't. Or land rich and.
I don't think it's fair to say, okay, well, you wanted it, but now the city of Aurora wants it, so we have to give it to the city of Aurora.
That's not, that's not right.
Well, I just hate to see it. I mean, the gentleman that, that approached us wants to clean it up.
Oh, I know.
So I'd hate to say, okay, Aurora, you can have it, and it sits, and it sits nasty for twenty more years.
Yeah, let's just.
We could always do a contract that says, if you purchase this property, the conditions are, you have to keep, keep it or maintain it going forward. Because you can do anything in a contract.
Can, can we do that, that it has to be clean?
Yeah, yeah, you can. There would, I mean, there would have to be a contract for the sale, yeah, do, but would you like to, you know, Megan and the assessor's office uses appraisers all the time for her property tax appeals and whatnot, would you like maybe to get a number from the appraisers, like what's it gonna cost to get it appraised? We had to have two appraisals. Um, I know finding appraisers can be difficult, and it can be far out, how long it's gonna take them to get to something. So would you like to have me talk with Megan and see if she can't get us a couple quotes for appraisals?
Yeah, I think I'd be the, is a prudent thing to do.
Yeah, to see, yeah. To see if it's justifiable, what the costs are gonna be.
Because I mean, it's not developable, so I can't imagine it's going to have great value.
Right.
And if your appraisals are.
Because the appraisal cost's gonna be higher than the value, yeah.
So, so, yeah, you said that the appraisal costs are higher than.
Redevelopment. And I don't know that they'll be higher, but I mean, it could be pretty.
But if nobody wants it, it may not be a matter of, okay, well.
And she could probably, Megan could actually probably tell us too what the value of the property is, if, uh, assessed valuation, if it were not owned by a municipality, right? She can, can she?
Yeah, she's got that.
She could give us that number.
Redevelopment has probably appraisers in their pocket, because they get this done occasionally.
Mm-hmm.
They would know appraisers too.
Oh.
Would you, Jim? Or Anthony?
My contacts.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's how many probably get an appraisal.
So.
Do that first. So let's do that, yeah, get appraisal.
Get numbers for the appraisal.
What are costs are gonna be involved in selling it.
Okay.
And then we can decide if it's worthwhile.
Okay. I can do that.
But hate to lose money selling a piece of property.
Alright. Alright, I can do that.
Some of that depends on how bad they want it.
Yeah, well, I guess one last question, and say we get the appraisal back, can we ask whatever? Do we have to ask what the?
It has to be, um.
Somewhere within.
Within a percentage of an appraisal.
After the property is appraised, the disposing agent shall determine a minimum bid for the property based on the appraisals and the disposing agent's knowledge of the property. And publish a notice in accordance with five-three-one, setting forth the terms and conditions of the sale, to Jim's point, including the minimum bid. Um.
So it is an auction, not a, just a sale?
Well, that you're gonna have to figure out too, if you're gonna do bids, or if you're gonna do auction, or.
Okay.
I can't stress how much it's easier it is to just transfer it to Aurora.
I know, but I'm trying, I'm trying.
I know, I know.
See, I'm not a lawyer, I, I have a conscience.
The bidding work, can you put something in play that no, no buildings or structures can be placed on it? Or even just so we don't have to worry about enforcement because of the floodway, floodway on it? If it's a property owner that is nearby?
That, yeah, that would be true.
We can do that, I, you have to.
I mean, it's only two acre, two-point-seven acres. It looks like most of it is the creek.
Yeah, he's, they're not gonna be able to.
I'll say this too.
Probably goes like this.
And I'll say this too, not saying you have to, but real estate, real estate transactions are something that is, you're permitted to have executive sessions on. So you could have an executive session to talk through those things. What conditions are we gonna wanna put on the sale?
Right.
So just throwing that out there too.
Well, let's get the numbers and.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion, we table this until further information.
A second.
On favor.
Bye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, Jack's Forever, uh, Foundation Annual Walk.
Um, they are not here. I don't know if they're running late. Um, it was my understanding that they was gonna have somebody here. We could go ahead and do redevelopment first.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. I didn't know if you were presenting.
Yeah, if, if they do not show up, I will present it. I know enough about it.
Okay. Mister Deaton. You're already up here, sir.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. Uh, I'm here this evening to request authority to, uh, submit a grant. A grant for, uh, it's a ready, ready grant for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which we plan to use in West Harrison to help us develop a new road, uh, to replace Moore Drive and to also upgrade the railroad crossings so that people can drive across it. And especially the, maybe fifteen semis a day that'll be doing that. Uh, I think you've received the grant information. So I'm here to field any questions and to ask your authority to submit this grant.
So are we just upgrading the existing Moore's Drive or we putting in a, a new?
We're putting in a new one.
A new one.
Uh, the existing one, uh, has two sharper curves for the semis. Uh, to do that, we had to acquire land, and we got land free from the neighbors. In return, we're gonna stub off, uh, a, a potential entrance into their property as, as we build, rebuild more drive. And, uh, that'll maybe make their property more saleable, and, uh, that may be one of our, our, our future objectives.
Right. Redevelopment's putting in the, uh, five-hundred thousand to the one-third, uh, this will be one-third of that.
Be putting in, I think, uh, we got a.
Four ninety, four hundred.
Yeah, vice.
Totally seven-hundred and some, we're putting in five-hundred.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
So it'll be one.
Correct.
And that also opens up the opportunity for future development.
That's correct. That, that's the reason for the stub off.
Okay, right. Okay, do you guys have any questions regarding the proposed grant?
No, we.
Very good.
All right.
We'll have the money.
Kevin motion.
So we're okay.
So an application for redevelopment, uh, to upgrade or put in a new Moore's Hill, Moore's Drive, uh, as presented by Mister Jim Deaton.
So moved. Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Motion sent.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Jim.
Oh. Oh. Okay.
No.
Okay. Megan. Okay. Thanks, Jim. Okay, Nicole Daley, planning and zoning. Can we do all these articles at one time, Andy?
I have them, I have it all put together as one ordinance.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I will need, I think Susan's.
Okay, let me go through, I'll give it to you.
Alright.
Uh, so the planning, um, commission had gone through, um, some changes of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision control ordinance. The majority of them, them, of them were clarification items, um, adding some definitions for clarification. Um, and things that, um, we need to see on some of the surveys with non-buildable lots. Um, one of the other ones with non-buildable lots was, um, so we have a clause in there that non-buildable lots, um, have to be transferred to in a joiner. We made some changes to if there's a purpose behind it, because Girbert County is unique, um, and with the way the farming is nowadays, that large tracks, that maybe, uh, for example, um, we're dealing with some large tracks, um, along Lothry Creek that are farmland, um, but really aren't buildable because of the flood plain and floodway, so we would require them to put non-buildable. But once you do that, then our clause says you have to transfer it to in a joiner. Um, and we have farmers that are interested in that, that may not be in a joiner, but within a distance to drive and farm the land. So, um, we wanted to put that in there, uh, because the uniqueness of Girbert County with the farming and recreational purposes of that. So that was one of the changes with non-buildable lots. Flag lots, um, when we went to, uh, review Article Three, Section three fifteen in the subdivision control ordinance, this was a clarification. Um, so there was a time when that ordinance was created and we were allowing people to split existing panhandles up to fifteen feet, but it really didn't say that, but a minimum of one. So all that, that we were interpreting, that they were doing, but nothing was written. We clarified it and just made it easier to follow on what we were actually allowing. And then we just created some standards, um, for those, uh, doc, doctored the exhibits that were in there, the figures to make sure they were clear and met the way the wording went. Um, those items were of the subdivision control items. Do you guys have any questions on just the subdivision control?
That subdivision control is, whatever's existing right now, straight?
Yes.
Old question I have.
Yep. Um, so as moving into the zoning ordinance, um, items that were changed, um, and working with, uh, ponds, um, so we have, um, regulations for new ponds, but we don't have them for existing ponds. Um, and we run into this when people are splitting land, whether they're splitting half the pond, whether they're trying to go right up to the pond. Um, and we felt we needed to have some similarities between the two, um, especially for maintenance agreements, so we didn't have anything to establish maintenance agreement, even if they wanted to split the pond and share it. That we can now, with this change, we can now require easements all the way around it with maintenance agreements um, prior to the survey or based on, on the survey before it's created. And then also including setbacks and stuff for new, new proposed lines near an existing pond. So all we did was match the requirements for a new pond and an existing pond when it comes to creating splits. Um, and then the last, adding a definition, um, so we had in our charts for minimum living area that that would be nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Um, since that's been put into play, um, in early twenty-twenty, uh, we haven't had anybody question that. Um, we've actually used the, uh, lower level outside dimensions to calculate the minimum square feet of that nine-fifty. Um, we were questioned on that recently, whether that meant first floor, second floor. Um, so we started getting into the definition, because there was no definition that was created. Um, so with the intent and the research that I did, um, I'm going back, the initial square footage for minimum square footage of a home was four hundred, and that was completely washed. Um, so for them to think that we were saying four hundred as a split between single or first floor and second floor, so that would be only two hundred on first floor, two hundred on second floor, that's why the interpretation was the way it was, is because that was never the intention of thinking of a second-story home. Um, so we've changed it to, um, the definition, and some of this language meets the state's definition in what the, in the minimum living area. Uh, we changed it to footprint, to be the outside footprint, and then we gave, um, two different, uh, scenarios with single-family, single-story, double, or two-story, and then two-family, single-story, um, and, uh, multi-story, because those are the two in the chart that we use that were flat out just nine-fifty. So we wanted that definition to be in there to do those. So, and I, what it does is multi-story still ends up being nine-fifty, it's just the adding of the two, and so does the two-story with the minimum square footage of that. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, on the, the bottom, the two-family, single-story, minimum living area, minimum seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, does that need to say per per unit? Because that's two families, so that would be, in my mind, I'm seeing a fifteen-hundred square foot, or do I get to cut that in half to make it three-seventy-five each unit? Because it, it's the same thing goes to the, the next page where you got minimum living area five-hundred square feet plus two-fifty, but it's two families, so you're down to three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet per unit.
Um.
Or should it say each unit?
I don't know if we have that as a separate, um, I'd have to look real quick.
I missed that first.
In our.
Email read through.
Yeah. Uh, well, I will.
We talked about a lot of meanings.
Yes, um, we read, actually, we read through this a couple times, and Plan Commission read through this a couple times, and I think each time we added something new to it, because we kept missing something, um.
I guess this, it says multi, table twenty-five point one, does that cover?
So there's a table twenty-five point one that lists all dimensional standards for all districts. Um, and I'm trying to think. Do you have that table up, the newer table? Do you have it? Or do you, I can look that up on my phone. New to our website. I'll show you where it is. Um, but I will, um, at least while he's looking at, up to answer that question, because I thought there was a clause on there already for that, um, where it stated when the, we had it as nine-fifty that it meant each unit, um, but I'll double-check that. Um, the Plan Commission heard this, just a certification, heard this on July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, where there were seven Plan Commission members present. Uh, and they forwarded a favorable recommendation on all the text amendments uh, that you are seeing, six voted for the recommendation, one member abstained. Um, this to the Board of Commissioners, um, for the subdivision control and the zoning ordinance changes. Um, they put them under two separate votes as well. I can tell you where.
Just so she guys know, I have to say, I'm not a final commission, because I only make a vote by phone, one.
Right.
The old one.
Yeah. You get that, just go to our page, just scroll down. Go there. You just have to scroll, right?
Wayne, what should we change that to, total fifteen-hundred?
No, I would just say minimum square feet each unit.
Each unit.
Each unit.
Just add two words and you, and to both of those, to that one and the next one, and you solve. Yep. Minimum living area each unit, and then I find minimum five-hundred square feet plus. But, but like I said, the multifamily twenty-five point one already covers, it says each unit, that might save you from having to do that, and strike it. Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, I don't know.
Sorry, there's three-hundred-and-thirty-four pages, which is going to. Am I going back?
I checked it too hard. Uh, you're in the definitions.
There, there, yes.
So he's looking at, some family, two family. He had nine-fifty. We have per unit. There.
On a multifamily?
Hmm, for the two families, it's per unit.
But does it need to say that here, just to, to clarify?
Well, we have the minimum two, well, the seven-fifty is per unit on the chart, so then the definition will take them to this for multi-story. Because that's what we'll be having, so it'll say that already in the chart. We can have it in the definition if we need to add it, but it's already in the chart.
Just so it's clear, we need to add it.
If we get it added, I think we can save you and, or somebody in argument later.
Yep.
So just so we're all aware, the, for the zoning ordinance text amendments, you can amend what's sent to you, but then it goes back to the Plan Commission with a written statement for what the amendment was and why it was.
And they can either say yea or nay. I don't think there would be an argument, we're just clarifying, so I would be, I would be fine to add per unit to those two.
So we can move to approve it and all.
Can they send back these one?
I have, have it all put together.
That's fine.
Okay, so we can move to amend the text changes with the, uh, clarification.
You, so it would, if the, so if you want to, you can, you can approve the ordinance as amended tonight. It then goes back to the Plan Commission for approval, and if they say, yeah, that's fine, it's effective as though it's from tonight.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. What number, Connie?
Ordinance?
Yeah.
So are you gonna add that?
Oh, oh, nine.
Oh, nine.
And then they'll work on.
Twenty, twenty-five, oh, oh, nine.
Oh, nine.
Zero, zero, nine. Alright, uh, right motion to approve the, uh, that changes to the ordinance, um, for Girbert County, it's on ordinance twenty-twenty-five, nine, zero, zero, nine.
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
All favor?
Bye.
Motion cleared.
And that's a subdivision control ordinance?
That one was for the zoning.
That was the zoning.
Okay.
For that.
Article twenty-seven of the zoning ordinance for definitions.
There you go. Yeah, we'll miss them. Now.
This is still.
Nah, we're not, no, we got.
No, well, we're not.
Yeah, it's all there.
Yeah, um. Yeah.
So should I wait to record that and everything, Nicole, until you see that it goes back through?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Nicole, where are we on your article?
We are on the revised interlocal agreement with the city of Aurora.
Okay.
Yeah, we just covered all the.
All those, yep.
We're done of all.
Just wanted to make sure.
So, I am.
Okay, the, uh, revise the interlocal with the, uh, city of Aurora, adding the MS four assistance.
So the, um, just to make it clear, the MS four assistance, um, is for permitting, um, assistance um, as we move through this, uh, MS four. Um.
Process.
Process. Um, so they've asked if, because, um, planning and zoning does their permitting, um, for um, everything that, uh, takes place in Aurora, they have just asked that if we could have the MS four coordinator assist on the permitting so that everything would go through the same process as we already do with tech review. Um, and, um, because we didn't see any major, um, hurdles in that in the next couple of years, we thought it'd be a trial basis. Um, so with the current interlocal agreement, it was, um, expected to expire at the end of this year. So what we've done is we've made the change that it would start as soon as everybody started, or signed it, and it would go until the end of twenty-twenty-six. Um, just to see how that plays out with the next year and a half with the MS four. Um, because if it looks like they annex a bunch of stuff and decide to build a bunch of stuff, it wouldn't be pertinent for our MS, or MS four coordinator to assist in that if it gets too much, so we're doing it as a test run. Um, but because the interlocal was, um, also going to be expiring at the end of this year, it would have added a three percent increase of the payment that we receive from Aurora, so that was also added um, to that, um, for twenty-twenty-six. So this current agreement that is amended will, um, run until the end of twenty-twenty-six. Um, and then we will have to sit down next summer to see how it's looking to, um, maintain it as it is to maybe then expand it to a three-year contract, um, but we'll have those discussions before the end of next year.
Questions? Questions.
So this was set to expire this year, but we're just extending it.
We're extending it to add the MS four just to see how that works out as a kind of a test run. Um, to twenty twenty-six, and then we'll reevaluate it, probably next summer, just to give us enough time to. Um, see what we need to do.
Have you had feedback from the City of Aurora on this?
They've already signed it.
Hey, okay, great.
Yep.
Kevin motion to approve revised interlocal agreement with the City of Aurora. Uh, that is being amended to add assistance with the Aurora MS four permitting.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Bye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The last one that I had, um, I believe you guys had received a copy of. Um, the, um. Agreement with Schneider. Now, this is just the agreement for the Beacon website. Um, so we do have other services with Schneider, but this is strictly just for the website. Um, that everybody seems to use. Um, so. I'm gonna explain a little bit of what the, the, why the change is, so they came to me, um. And stated that they are going into a kind of bundle deal because they've gotten so many tools now that they can add. To the website to assist communities or citizens that they're going into a bundle type thing. Um, so the difference in the bundles that they offer, um, just an increase in price, so, um, the one that, um. I've talked over with and looking at is the basic bundle. Um, that was only an increase. Um, for a yearly thing on for about thirty-three hundred dollars per year of what we currently pay. There will be a one-time setup fee, and that is to get, um, some of these tools set up. Um, specifically for Dearborn County, um, cause it takes, um, some things from the auditor's page, the assessors. Information, the mapping, um, to make these work, so they have to set that up, so all these tools run smoothly. And that there's, most of the tools that are on Beacon are a nightly sync. So, and what that means is, um, as the auditor. Makes changes in their system, as the assessor makes changes in their system, if I make changes on the mapping. Nightly, that is. Uploaded and synced, so it's refreshed the next day. So most of the stuff is a constant update unless it's on a. Yearly cycle with, um, I don't get the nuances of the auditor, of the assessor, of how they do their things.
Do you have the interlocal for Aurora? That has to be signed by them too.
Yes. Um, so I went with the basic, the essential was going to be, um, was going to add fifteen thousand per year. Um, but I wanted to get at least these, um, new items, um, that would, uh, be beneficial to us. The fifteen thousand, um, would add some benefit, but maybe not fifteen thousand dollars worth of a benefit. Um, so we wanted to go with the bundle, um, that added a few more benefits. Um. To what we don't have right now, um, one being, um, that there will be an advertisement tool on there. Where it doesn't have to be necessarily private company advertisement, but it can be internal advertisement meetings. Um, things that are happening in the county, um, so it comes up at the top of the Beacon page. Um, and it would, could come a notice, and I think they have up to thirty notices that can be up there, so every time you make a click, it would change. Um, so that's one addition that would be helpful with. Just notifications for meetings and anything like that, so there will be changes, but, um. Good changes to it, and for thirty-three, um, hundred dollars a year, um, I thought it was a good deal. Um, because of the.
Thirty-three hundred adds the additional tools?
Yes.
Okay, can you talk about any of those tools and what they often do for us?
Yeah. Um, so the, um. So for instance, the data extract tool, so I'm just gonna go over the basic, what I'm asking for the increase on. So the data extract tool, um, what that will do is. Currently, the way we do it is if someone is wanting our, um, GIS information. They have to call me, I send them a data agreement, uh, data sharing agreement, they have to sign it, send it back, they have to tell me what they want. Uh, depending on the charge, I have to have them call, we take the credit card payment, and then I have to do the work of. Download, downloading the area that they want to email it to them.
I want to just that currently happen, do we have, they have this tool?
We don't currently have this tool, so currently I do it. Instead of this tool doing it. So.
Okay.
Um, if someone emails me an area, so. During the summertime, like spring to fall, like your construction area frame. I'm probably at least once a week.
You charge for that?
We do. This will charge as well, so we're, we're not losing.
It's simpler.
It's gonna make it simpler because they're going to do it on their end. They're gonna go on to Beacon, they're gonna select an area they want. Go through a few steps, pay for the data, and it will do it and send it to them. So.
They don't have to call anymore.
They don't have to call, I don't have to do it, I don't have to figure out when they've paid, I, cause I never do. The downloading until I know they've paid.
Does it make it easier for the end year?
It'll make it definitely easier for, and I had all summer long, I've. When they request something, they usually ask, is there, instead of asking you, is there a place I can do this myself?
So, uh, are we charging for any of these other tools that are being used or issued?
So there are a few, a few tools that we existing, we have existing, um, that we do charge for the subscription. Um, we were talking about increasing that subscription because of the added tools. Um, but we currently do have tools that are locked unless you have us pay a subscription.
Okay, so what I'm going for is. With these additions, are they helping offset the costs?
Yes, yeah, cause we'll, we'll, um, be able to increase the, uh, the cost of a subscription because the, uh, more tools that are available for them. Um, it'll save time in some aspects of it where we're not doing it, the people are do, that are requesting it, we'll be able to do it. Um. There, so like the comparable search type thing, that is under a subscription currently, that's an existing item. Um, the advertising, um, like I said, um. That's something we can discuss once it's set up. If we wanted to do offset costs that way by having. Realtors on there, that's a big thing, in other counties, they have realtors.
Contractors.
Contractors, um, or it's just a county, but what's, it's a revolving advertisement, and some communities. Uh, that's what they do is they charge the private sector to advertise there, um, to help offset the cost of. Just even the website itself.
All right, so in the basic bundle, you're getting core, you're getting math, you're getting account management, you're getting data abstract tool.
Yes.
Repairable search, op report generator, and property tax laws.
And the whole next page.
On that page.
Depending on what you guys are looking at.
Yeah, well.
Or what's, what's in the contract?
Yeah, well, it's.
Well, that's what you said, goes to H or goes all the way to N?
Eagle view.
Oh, yes, yes, I was, I should have sent you out the easy view.
Okay.
List.
Just for the website. And it's, did you say thirty-three hundred dollars?
Thirty-three hundred dollars a year with a one-time fee of, um. The setup fee. Um, and what they've agreed to do is, so that setup fee is forty-nine hundred. So as soon as we have the contract signed, they've agreed to start the setup now, um. Uh, we would just pay the setup fee now, and that way things can be done by January first. So the mapping would start new, fresh in January first, and that would then, um. We wouldn't have to pay any increase in the contract amount. The yearly contract amount until January when we typically pay it.
Hey, how much is the setup fee?
Forty-nine hundred.
Forty-nine hundred.
The three additional things asked for. At the bottom.
All right, so the setup fee is. Um, the forty-eight ninety-four, to be exact.
Guys having further questions?
Yeah, there's additional components, elected subscription building, is that part of the what you were talking about, where people, you build? People that are already using it?
Yes.
And then you'll have the property taxes, will be you could pay from that site, you can pay your property taxes from that site. Okay.
Oh, so you'll be able to make a property tax payment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Payment integration.
Yeah, it, it, that, we have that now, we added that a while ago, um, but we're, that, that's included in the bundle, so we're not. So there's things in the bundle that are being added that we're paying for, but that's actually added. And then just so you know, like the Eagle View Connect, not put, many people know, um, where that tool is on Beacon, but you can actually. Click on that when you're at the property on the Beacon site, click on it, it'll give you the obliques, which is the side views. Um, so what we've had flown in different county with the obliques is connected into Beacon as well for those side views.
You know that, any other questions?
No.
My motion to approve the, uh. Uh. Inclusion of a basic bundle for the, uh. Let's see, what website, it's going for the S- Snyder website?
The Beacon.
Beacon website. Okay.
So moved.
Presented by, uh. Nicole.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Bye.
Motion for us. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Connie, did you need the Schneider contract too, or you have that for them to sign?
We'll be on this one.
I thought you were bringing the originals.
I have the original on that, and that would just be by Jim.
And, and they also need to sign the Aurora or the.
Yes, I have that too.
And, um, are you coming to the council meeting?
I'm happy. Um, for the council, Sandy's gonna be a council for the, um, the interlocal.
And she's bringing that with her?
Yes.
Or do you want me?
Because I have Aurora's already attached to it, or you can take it with you.
It's up to you, whatever.
Because I already have Aurora's attached to it.
Okay.
So this one gets signed with the all of you? And Jim, this is just.
If you don't mind, I'll hang on to it.
Yeah, that's fine. Cause I won't need it again till Plan Commission.
When's Council, Connie?
The fifth.
Friday.
Friday.
But she's doing the. Fifth of September.
Okay.
Having her here on Friday.
Yeah, I don't, what time is that? I don't have it on my calendar.
Nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
All right, next.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Uh, next up ordinance to amend, uh, seventy dot oh-six in code of ordinances to traffic control signs and signals.
Uh, yes, so this was discussed last meeting, uh, we have a deaf policy, um, and. The commissioners, again, last meeting, discussed that they were fine with the policy, but wanted to remove the language that the property owner would be responsible for. Paying for the sign, um, it was minimal cost. Um, and so in discussing this matter with Todd also, um, and as discussed in the meeting, we thought it would. Make sense to actually include this in the code of ordinances so that it could be there for anybody to find. So that would be added to seventy point oh-six, which is traffic control signs and signals. Um, there's some cleanup in there also, just the way things were worded, and then discussing with Todd and with, uh, with each of you, and. I think we think it makes sense to have it a deaf and or blind child sign policy. Um, so that's how it is really. And so this would be zero one zero, twenty twenty-five, zero one zero, an ordinance to amend section seventy point zero-six of the Dearborn County Indiana Code of Ordinances.
I moved to pass ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five, zero one zero.
Seconded.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay. Ordinance to approve, uh, chapter ninety in the code of ordinances and the, or animal control?
Uh, yes, and, uh, our animal control director, Stephen Hofstadter, is here also, um, so when we. Really revamped our chapter ninety on animals back when Marlene was here. One of the things we did was to create a grace period and a fine schedule so that if someone was ticketed. They could pay the ticket pursuant to the fine schedule, um. Directly to animal control, and that would be the end of it, we ticket them, they pay the ticket, and then we all go our separate ways, and we did that because we didn't wanna bog down. The courts with a whole bunch of animal control ordinance violations. However, what we found is. There are some, not a lot, but there are some individuals that are perfectly happy to just keep paying tickets. And so we're not getting into court with those individuals. Whereas if we're able to get into court with them, we have a lot more, you know, we can ask for a lot more, I mean, maybe this person's not a good animal owner, and they shouldn't have an animal. And we can ask the court that they will be confiscated, so. So what this would do is. Um, and, and we reset, and, and after that grace period was created, we also amended this previously. For situations where it was animal that had bitten somebody, we didn't want that grace period in there, we wanted to be able to go directly to court, so that change was made previously. So what this would do, this ordinance, which would be twenty twenty-five dash zero one one, um, would. Update section ninety point nine nine. Um, uh, that pertains to this grace period. And it would eliminate the grace period if it is a third offense. For any violation within a twelve-month period, so basically. Three strikes, you're out, you know, you get two tickets, and if, if Steven has to write you another ticket, he's not. Letting you pay it, he's filing it with city court, and we're going to city court.
When the time starts falling when they get issued the first ticket?
Issue the first ticket, yes.
Okay, that starts the clock.
Yes, for the twelve months, yes. Um, and so then there would be additional changes to the fine schedule, um. As you can see, we're really, we're deleting any subsequent offenses because after the second offense, we're gonna be going to court, so it would be third offense in any subsequent offenses. We also changing that fine schedule amount for the second offense, um, in the first part, so it would be a hundred dollars for a first offense. Second offense would go from two fifty to three hundred, and then for the lower section, um, which are the. Lower, um, infractions, first fence would go from twenty-five to fifty dollars, second fence would go from one hundred to one hundred and fifty dollars. It, we're, we're really just trying to deter people from violating the animal control ordinance, and we want. Positive changes to be made after the first events, rather than, um. You know, we want it to be set up to where somebody's not okay to just keep paying tickets over and over again, it's a waste of. Um, Steven's time, and it doesn't fix the problem, and the neighbors have to deal with it, so. This is something we've actually talked about for, I have a few times.
I'm a little confused about the dollar amounts, I think, didn't we talk about five hundred dollars for? The third and fourth.
That was the old max, you want me to come up there?
Yes.
Okay. That was actually the old max for a class C violation, was five hundred dollars.
There you are, and we'll go from there.
Steve Hofstadter, Director of Animal Control.
Yeah.
So five hundred was the old max for a class C, um, but that was what Andy had already mentioned there, and ninety point nine nine, um. That we changed the va, the values of them, and we're not doing the five hundred for a third violation, cause we're not. We're not giving them a chance to pay for a third violation anymore, it's, that's it, three, like, like you said, three strikes.
Taking them to court then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, so like, if you look at the upper part, that's, those are your class B infractions, and certain sections of the animal control ordinance are subject to a class. Are, are a class B infraction, and certain subject sections are class C infractions. So for a class B infraction, for example, first offense pursuant to the fine schedule would be a hundred dollars, and that grace period's fourteen days, they have two weeks to, to pay that.
Pretty soon.
Um, that's what, the, it would still be fourteen days. For the first offense, second offense would be three hundred dollars instead of two hundred and fifty.
Right.
And then if they get a third offense, again, within a twelve-month period. He's gonna write a ticket, but then immediately file it with court, with the court, and so now they're.
The ticket.
What's that?
No, how, how much is the?
Well, and that's where I was getting, so now they're looking at the fine from the court, if they're found to have violated. A fine to the, to, from the court and court costs from the court. And the fine is on, um, a B infraction is, oh, up to a thousand dollars on a B infraction.
Yes.
Up to a thousand dollars, and we, you know, would have the ability to tell the court, Your Honor, this is actually the third offense within however many months. They've previously been fined one hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, and those tickets have been paid, we're asking for a fine in X number of dollars plus court costs. So once you get into court, you don't only have to find, deal with, you have court costs to deal with also. And so for the C infractions, that's a lower infraction, it would be fifty dollars first offense, one hundred and fifty dollars second offense, and the max is five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Now, Steve, this, this, uh, as far as you, your experience, this is. The worst of the worst violators, it's the, your average dog owner that has a dog.
Yes, yes.
You're not, they're not gonna.
Since COVID, it's, it's been an influx. Um, and part of why this has been such an issue too, is because most of the violations that we have as violators are like our ninety point one seven C. Or which is, uh, restraint of animals, and then your ninety point one six, which is public nuisance, those are our two biggest violators. There also are a lower. And costs are a classy violators, so that's why these people are so willing to just pay it, I mean, cause it used to be twenty-five dollars the first one. Hundred, five hundred, and surprisingly, you have people that are okay with paying five hundred dollars and calling it a day.
Folks we're dealing with, they pay five hundred bucks.
Yeah, gotcha. But there's the the normal person that are not gonna get that.
No, no.
They're gonna get to the third.
Yeah, very rarely we see that. Most people even after the first, we don't even have to get to the first citation with most normal people. We talk to them, educate them and then we're good.
Thanks, Stephen.
If the dogs are confiscated, what happens to the dogs?
So the dogs are confiscated, we have yet to have a situation like this yet. But when it does get to it, we're gonna take possession of the animal, it'll become property appalls at that point. And then we'll just begin normal procedure like we would a stray animal after the five day intake. Uh spay neuter vaccination.
So let me ask, would the owner owners of those dogs, could they come down and actually? Uh get their dogs back?
So myself and the director at the shelter, we made a little deterrent for that. Anytime we have animals come from somebody that. They don't need them back or we had to take them for a reason, they have what's called a do not adopt list. So what we do is we put them and then also I've even looked into like immediate family members, cause that's another issue we have is if we put that person on a do not adopt list. Then their brothers, sisters, uncles, cousins come in to try to get the dog.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, so we put them all like on a do not adopt list and that's on a on a digital database that doesn't go away.
Okay. Any other question?
There's one.
Well, and uh motion to approve uh. Amendment to ordinance chapter ninety in the code of ordinances of animal control.
Asked.
Asked presented by Mr. Biden Wilson.
So moved. Second.
Uh all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Connie, I don't know why.
Take a jump.
My heading cut off on this one.
Yes, it is.
Want me to send you a new first page, just like.
Do you need a motion to adopt the ordinance? Is this is this new ordinance?
Yeah, it's twenty twenty five dash zero one one.
Okay, so I make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero one one. Second.
Motion carries.
Second. Oh, and on that too, this is effective January one. This isn't. We're gonna have this take effect January one, start clean with that time, cause I I gotta give the city court an update too with the changed fine schedule and. Give them time. No, I was just saying, Mike, for some reason my heading cut off on the top, doesn't say Dearborn County Board of Commissioners, so if you want me to just, you want me to just email you a new first page?
Okay, I'm not even sure what this is.
I asked the questions, that's the drug, the pharma drug.
Yeah.
Bankruptcy.
Yeah, I saw it back.
You guys are really making me talk a lot today.
Heard it.
Thanks.
This is the actual file.
And then do you have the participation form? There's a separate petition, participation form.
Okay, we got the Purdue Pharma ballot.
Yeah, so.
Looks like we have to fill something out.
Yeah, so there's a there's a ballot and there's a participation form, so what this is is the. Most of the the money that we're receiving is opioid funds was part of a national opioid settlement. Um and that was handled by the states, the AGs and that money trickles down to local government. This is separate, this is a bankruptcy for Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family um and. The bankruptcy plan was previously approved and I think it was struck down by the spring port. So they went back to the drawing board. And um the amount of money going to state and local governments has increased. The class representatives are recommending approval again of the plan, so there's that's where the ballot comes in. But because this is separate from the national opioid litigation, there's also a uh participation form um somewhere.
I can't remember, there was more documentation involving this and what was sent out to. And I think the this actually had to be, this ballot had to be returned by September.
September thirty, yes, so we're well within the time to.
Yeah, we got plenty of time.
I'll have to find out. I knew somebody sent it out to me.
Uh but I I don't see anything on the ballot.
Well, the ballot's here. We have the ballot.
I know, but there was.
There's a participation form also.
Yeah.
To saying, because and be the reason for that is is by executing the participation form and, you know, voting in favor of the. The plan, you are giving up rights, you're giving up Dearborn County's rights to go against Purdue Pharma, the Sackler family on your own.
Yeah.
Um so that's what.
It's a class action.
Right. The bankruptcy. That has a class involved, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would be on that flash drive that they sent? Andy?
I mean, I'll find it here.
Are you gonna throw this out, Andy, and send it back?
Um, I mean, I think soon I can get it figured out.
Plus I know.
Well, and I will say too that we did ta- talk to Jake at Barnes and they, you know, hey, can you fill out how? Your other municipal clients are handling this and he read it the same way. The money to state local has been increased, the classes representatives are recommending approval and so they didn't see any reason.
Do I have an idea at all how much?
No, it hasn't gotten that far yet.
Right, we're just.
We just need to decide to accept or reject.
Right.
Okay, uh.
Okay, I found it here.
I make a motion to accept the plan.
So so it would be a motion to execute the. Participation and release form and to vote in favor of the plan.
So what Andy said.
So moved.
Second.
I'll tell them.
Aye.
You can get that. Connie.
Yeah.
Put that in writing.
Okay, uh. Next up on the agenda is the uh emergency need to upgrade the fire system panels.
Um.
To Hayden.
Yeah, so this this is from Eric Hartman actually and. There's a need to upgrade um the controls and the. Jail, the complete jail and the old courthouse um because we can't get parts for um.
Well, they're they're in operational right now, right?
No, they're 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 working, but they can't. They can't get, yeah, they're.
Yeah, they break, we can't fix it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think.
I thought I thought we had an outage.
Um I don't think there's an outage right now because I think that would be. Uh you know, the fire, we we are in violation of the fire marshal because some of them are talking to each other.
Okay.
Meaning the the.
One way or the other, we need to go.
Signals are not.
Yes, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. So we we have a um. Quote from Siemens, who is the actual um. Units that are in there right now, we also.
They were the initial installers.
Yes, and those are the ones that it would. Bring it into um.
Compliance.
Compliance with the fire marshal and also it would be compatible with what we have in. The administration building and the annex here. Um Johnson Controls has been contacted. But they did not get out here until today, so we don't have another quote from them, but they are going to give us a quote. But it would be preferred that we use Siemens because it's the one that's in there right now and it would be compatible to what we have existing.
And we've actually advertised this for the September fifth council meeting too.
September fifth? They can't do it this Friday.
I mean, if they have to, yeah. No, they cannot because it wasn't advertised. They can do it on the fifth, just a couple of weeks away. And if he gets this put in, I bet you don't get a bill until then anyway, so.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get it.
Yeah.
So will will this system, how have they checked on what the, is this a newer system than what we have? In this building or is it equivalent to? Cause when my my question for asking is this, is this one almost outdated?
No, it's this would be a new system that they're updating.
But I mean, if where is it in their lifespan? Cause all these companies I deal with and it's in a and test equipment is. Their lifespan and you gotta be careful that you're not at the end of their lifespan. It's brand new.
Right.
But the next unit is coming out next year.
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
I can give Eric a call real quick if you want me to do that.
That would be my only.
To do that while we move on the uh this grant for the health department? And see if we can't find out.
Or if they have a time when parts will be of how long may guarantee parts available for this system?
And I don't know if that's in the proposal or not.
I didn't see it when I read through it.
I didn't see.
Any kind of, you know, serviceability timeframe. I just speak from experience buying a piece of equipment that was outdated shortly after I bought it. This is a, I think something that's been kicked down the road to us from years and years ago when they. Did uh they let the old system in because it was still working, so we've kinda saved on the back of that now, but yeah, good point to. Figure out whether it's gonna go.
Let's uh let's go ahead and move forward while Sue's on the phone and uh Ms. Fromhold, do you have claims?
Hey, question real.
I do.
Um in the Siemens.
We give those.
How long will the life of this, these, the new parts being put in to make it comparable? Have they talked to you about how long the life will be and how long the parts will be available? The life of the parts.
Why motion to approve claims?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carriers.
One. Okay. All right, um hang on a second. He said that the life of these are normally fifteen, but most people leave the parts until twenty and then they run into this problem here. And when was the last time we had this one done? Ten years ago.
Don't hang up.
Yeah, it was it was ten years for the jail and it's been twenty five on the courthouse over there so far. And usually the life is fifteen years. And they they've let it kick the can down the road.
Hey, Sue, could you play my speakerphone?
Yep, hang on, I'm up. I got you on speakerphone, Eric.
All right. So the my question was is, were they giving you a timeframe of how long parts are available for this system? Or is there any way?
They didn't really discuss that, I'm just talking about on your devices. As as a whole, what the how the rules are, you're supposed to have them replaced every fifteen to twenty years. So they're. The system itself, it should be longer than that, cause. SAS thing that we had for the speaker, the smoke heads and alarm attachments. They've probably been in service for at least fifteen, not twenty five to thirty years. The AG don't change their whole system that often.
Okay.
That is the answer to your question or not.
Well, my que- my the question was, is the panel, is this panel, if it fails in eight years, is it outdated to where they're gonna say so?
Uh no, it shouldn't be doing that.
Okay.
I I know better than that, cause it this this is usually lasts a lot longer than that.
Right.
Cause it's cause the panel and in the courthouse was the first one we got from them, also in the renovation in two thousand. And in fourteen. It was right on the cusp of, you know, is should we switch it or should. Stick with the, oh, I figure they just mash it, try to stay with it, save money.
Okay.
But that's all that painted that, you know, the corradary that. Or or the 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 year, the new new edition already.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No. We're good.
Thank you, thank you, Eric.
All right, let's finish up with Connie and we'll come back.
That's my this.
Uh Ms. Fromhold, all in favor? Have a motion to approve payroll.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carriers. Minutes.
Yes. And I also have a grant from the health.
Yeah, I got it right here. Why motion to approve the minutes from the order of commissioners meeting August five, twenty twenty five.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carriers. Okay. I can't wait to hear about this. Grant. Safe sleep environment program.
Yeah, I can't tell you any more than what's on the grant paperwork. How can I go? Safe sleep environments for expecting parents, caregivers, including CPR certification.
Yeah, I know, that goes a lot of directions.
Yeah.
No county matches.
I I really don't know. I don't know.
This is no county match?
No.
No county match, it's a.
Yeah, I was confused as to what it's doing.
Yeah, I I read that, I know, well, I don't even know what this means.
So. Yeah, I would say it's an educational grant that they're gonna like back to sleep and then with optional uh.
And all this stuff too.
So CPR.
Supplies.
Supplies that are buying.
Yeah.
Okay, certification, okay, lactation specialist um is a to help with um.
It's we feel like it's they're trying to get a lot done.
They are, yeah, so. Oh CPR certification, uh. Some CPR, blood pressure cuffs, there's a lot of things in here.
Yeah, they do a good job up there.
Yeah.
They spend.
All right, you guys have any further questions or concerns?
No.
Just. All right, motion to approve the request uh from the health department for a grant application of sixty seven thousand. Seven hundred sixty six dollars and eighteen cents. For safe sleeve environments for expecting parents slash caregivers, including CPR certification. This grant has it all.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carriers. Where was it all of a sudden? Got it, oh, here it is. Got it. Yep, yeah.
Can you guys have all of holiday calendar? We do that for the judges.
Right, we're gonna jump back to the fire system and then we'll finish. Okay, um.
All right, so there's some steps to this.
What?
There's some steps to do this, so the first thing you need to do.
Oh, yes.
The first thing you need to do is make a motion to declare the situation with the fire system panels in the jail and emergency. That involves actual or threatened injury to person or property or disruption of governmental um activity.
So moved.
I'm seconded.
As presented by Mr. Biden.
By Andy.
Okay. Uh, motion carriers, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carriers.
Uh with the declaration of emergency that and that shortens the process for the public works project. Uh requires the invitation from at least two persons known to deal in the public work. Eric has already done this. He invited quotes from Siemens and Johnson. Um Johnson did not get a quote back in time um and Siemens um did. And so if you're. It is your desire, it would be to accept the quote from Siemens to complete the emergency repairs.
Does anyone just discussion on this?
I don't know, man. Yeah, I like answering.
Yeah, I only question.
Yeah, yeah, I like.
You too.
Yeah, it comes back.
Yeah. Eric is top.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, okay, motion to approve the uh Siemens quote of one hundred and forty four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and forty two cents. To upgrade our fire system panel.
I have you already voted on it, Dwayne and then Kevin.
No, we voted on the.
Declaring an emergency.
Right, wow, okay.
Uh and it's a it's a declaration of emergency, it's pursuant to thirty six dash one dash twelve dash nine.
I'll listen to it, I've just. You guys are going all over the place. So who did that then?
Uh Dwayne moved, I seconded.
On.
The declaration of.
Accept the quote.
The declaration.
Yeah.
Now we're doing the quote, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You leave it the same.
I made the motion to.
So moved.
The quote.
Yeah. Uh seconded.
So, okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carriers.
We got it all confused. Any other steps?
We gotta.
No. Okay, good.
Almost to the end here.[1747.38]
We're gonna get that.
Uh, now we have before the uh, oh, Ms. Fromhold, you do the employee holiday can, calendar?
Do we want to do that first?
I mean, it's right in front of us.
Okay, sure.
Self explanatory. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Nope.
Yep.
Okay, then motion to approve the employee holiday, holiday calendar for twenty twenty six.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
You gotta go back in time. Sue's gotta do title six.
Yes.
You skipped that.
Right.
And let, let it go.
Jack's forever.
Let's do the Jack's.
Jack's.
Oh, okay.
That they never.
They never.
Okay.
Um, this has been going on since two thousand and ten. The little boy got killed out on North Dearborn Road.
Remember it.
And every year the family comes in and asks for permission to close the road. I have checked with Shane. They have gotten contact with Shane already, and he's going to put the deputies out there like he does every year, so.
When is that?
It's gonna be September thirteen. Um, and in your pockets it had the map and, and you know, it just gave a background of it and um the uh applicant or the.
The route.
Yeah, so.
I'll send it over.
Yeah, so it's basically giving your blessings to close that road through.
Yeah, make it read to ten thirty.
Exactly.
It's, it time range from eight thirty to ten thirty.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Ke- Kevin, motion to approve of closer uh notice for Jack's Forever uh three foundation.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, now Sue.
My title six.
Yeah, your title six.
Yeah, so every year I have to bring this before you, because NDOT requires us to do this because we get federal funding. And anybody getting federal funding, they have to follow these rules. We have to have a title six implementation plan that is put into place every single year. And we have to have an ADA transition plan that's updated every three years. In twenty twenty six, I'll be bringing that to you. So with this plan, um, I only put the first two pages in it because it's a thirty page report that I have to upload tomorrow after you approve it to NDOT. Um, I need, there's a resolution putting it in place and that resolution is twenty twenty five zero zero two. Um, and then I also have to have you sign assurances that go to all the contractors for the um contracts that, that we, that Todd engages with. These assurances signed by the commissioners have to go in every contract that he presents and get signed by contractors. Um, so that's that in a nutshell.
Okay, you. You say we have a res- resolution?
Yeah, it's on the back page of that. Uh, resolution two twenty five.
Yeah, I got, I got it. I just got a copy. I was, I was.
I have the original.
Okay.
Yeah.
I never put originals in your pockets.
That's why they lose it, right?
That's why I was asking for it. I knew I didn't have any. All right, Dwayne motion to approve uh my title six updates as presented by Ms. Hayden. And uh, a resolution to be signed uh number two zero two five zero zero two. Um.
So moved.
There we go.
Seconded.
All in favor.
Aye.
Most carries.
And then this is the assurances as well.
Okay, I think we're, you know, what's this?
That's the assurance that goes along with it.
Yeah. We can't do a blanket statement and ask about every contract?
Um, well, that, these pages get added to, and it's a standard NDOT contract. That's why Todd uses.
The standard.
Specifically NDOT contracts. And he always makes an announcement when he says that this is an NDOT contract, so.
Mr. Biden, does he have anything else for us?
You know, I have to make copies of.
Um, just a quick update.
They go in the plan.
And you, you can.
I don't know if we've got them back yet, but it's as far as nine one one dispatch goes, um, Aurora Greendale, Morse Hill and Dillsboro are all, have all approved. Saint Leon's going to take it up at their September meeting. Um, still waiting to hear back from Lawrenceburg and West Harris.
Did you get their signature sheet?
As I said, I don't.
I've gotten nothing.
Um, so I've been fol- trying to follow up the city and town attorneys and I'll make sure they, they know to get those signatures to us.
Okay.
That's all. I think I've spoken enough.
All right, Ms. comments. Kevin, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Well.
I just have one thing. Uh, I want to thank Sue. Uh, we started our um Facebook page at the beginning of the year. And she beats me to most times when there's something to post, so um, it is, though it is being actively used and shared. So the information is getting out there. So thank you, Sue, for staying up on it.
Okay, I don't have anything at this time either. Uh, do we have any later rival information?
Um, I have one last thing that Chris Hightmire brought to me this afternoon. Um, it's an updated uh management control agreement with um the cities so that nine one one can do um the NCIC and IDACS governing board, um, they, that allows them to be able to run plates and run criminal back- background. Dispatch can do that for the cities and stuff, so um, it was signed by Jared Teeny. Chris needs one signed with his and with the three new commissioners or the.
You just need a signature?
Yes.
Okay, does it like to bring that up here? Why is Jared signing that?
Jared will sign the old ones.
Oh, yes, okay, that's right.
And since Chris is our new guy now.
Right.
Can you send me a copy signer what it is? Yes, ma'am. I'm quite confused tonight.
Lot going on tonight. Lot of abbreviations and.
I hate acronyms.
I do too.
Oh, thank you, guys.
So any public comment? Okay, hearing none, then blatant motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meaning adjourned.
You guys forgot that one.